Good evening and welcome everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started here. Thanks for joining us for our public hearing tonight and taking the time out of your evening. This is a hearing for Northgate Lelandoff Pines LLC at Lelandoff Pines Campground in Centerville Township in Lelandoff County. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'm just going to be helping to moderate at least part of the public hearing tonight. My colleague Jim Ostrowski is going to be taking over for me at some point. Who's also with Environmental Support Division of Eagle. But before we get too far ahead of ourselves, I've got a couple of things to go through, just some logistical slides here. In case you haven't joined us for one of these public hearings before virtually, this is what the agenda is gonna look like. We're starting off with the introduction. That's what we're doing right now. Big thing to keep in mind is that there's two parts. There's first part is an informational session where the applicant or the applicant's agent is gonna have an opportunity to present information on the proposed project. And that'll be followed up with a question and answer session. So you have an opportunity to ask a question. And then about six thirty or until we run out of questions, we're gonna move on to the official hearing portion. That's where you'll have an opportunity to make a statement for the record and everyone will have an opportunity to make a statement tonight and we'll walk through how we're gonna do that a little bit later on and that'll be the official hearing part. And then we'll just go over some other things like where to find other information and then who to contact if you have follow-up or further questions. All right, just so you're aware, all lines are muted, so you'll be able to hear us, but we won't be able to hear you. You can submit your questions using the Q and A box in your Zoom toolbar, but again, we're gonna wait until after the presentation by the applicant before we have our Q and A session. And then also just so you're aware, we are recording this hearing, so it'll be on our YouTube channel in a couple of days and you'll be able to watch it again or forward it on or do with it what you will at that time. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started by introducing the other staff we have here on the line. So Joe and Robin, feel free to turn your cameras on, introduce yourselves.
Welcome, everybody. I'm Joe Haas, District Supervisor for the Cadillac and Gaylord District Offices with Eagle Water Resources Division. I supervise field staff in the twenty-two counties in the northern lower peninsula, specifically with Water Resources Division and covering the regulatory side of resource programs. I just wanted to say thanks, everybody, for taking the time to be here this evening.
My name is Robin Schmidt. I'm the staff person assigned to Lelandoff County and will be reviewing the pending application. The reason we're here tonight is that Northgate Lelandoff Pines LLC has proposed Marina reconfiguration, boat ramp work, installation of dry hydrant and shoreline protection, impacting regulated natural resources, including wetlands and Lake Lelandoff.
Perfect. Yeah, thanks for those introductions, Robin and Joe. So at this point, we're gonna start the informational session. Oops, I'm getting ahead of myself. And so I'm gonna unmute Jason Vander Cody and Jason should be in our audience. Let me see here. All right, so Jason, you're unmuted on our end. And yep, you looks, you look like you're unmuted too. So I have your slides here or your diagrams. Feel free to just let me know when you wanna switch slides and I'll switch slides for you. I should be able to zoom in as well if you need something zoomed in on and you can begin when you're ready.
Great, thank you, Ryan. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, sounds good.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Vander Cody. I am the Civil Engineer with Fishbeck. We've been retained by Northgate Lelandoff Pines LLC to prepare the application for the improvements at the campground on the on the water side, going through the Eagle permitting process under Part 301 and 303. Tonight I'll be giving you a brief introduction to the application, talking through the thirteen sketches and then handing it back to our colleagues at the state. So if you could go to the first slide for me, thank you. The campground is located on the west shore of the south side of Lake Lelandoff, where the lake is about a mile wide and we have approximately eighty acres of property at that location. Next slide, please. Sorry. The existing conditions of the campground include three docks currently with a total of eighty-two slips, two boat launches currently, one seawall and about a half a mile of shoreline. We own. Next slide, please. This slide is an enlargement of the improvement area. You can see the existing dock to the east on the center and then towards the the north there as well as the boat launches. The campground is landward and that is not part of the Eagle application. The Eagle application focuses on the natural resources impacts on the water side and with the wetlands. Next slide, please. This is the proposed conditions. You can see that we have are proposing to replace three docks with two docks. One is consolidated dock up on the northeast. The other is main dock there in front in the middle. We also are proposing to consolidate the two boat launches into a single boat launch towards the middle of the property and a little further away from our neighbors towards the southwest. And we are proposing to improve the existing seawall and rehabilitate it due to its age and condition. And we are proposing a dry hydrant which will allow the Cedar Area Fire Department to have an access point to Lake Lelandoff for the protection of the Centerville Township community. And then finally, we are proposing to armor our shoreline to inhibit and prevent the further subsidence of the upland area that we own in the property and allow us to continue to use the area for campers for years to come. The next eight slides are gonna be enlargements of those specific improvements. Next slide, please. So slide five is the main dock, which is six slips and in front of our Marina building and parking lot. Next slide, please. Slide six is our dry hydrant, which is immediately adjacent to the boat launch area. And that will allow the fire department quick and easy access to the hydrant as well as a convenient turnaround for entering and exiting the site. To the right of that dry hydrant or just to the north is going to be our boat launch. Proposing to have two ramps, one on the or one ramp with two sides, one on the north side, one on the south side there on the plan and a dock in the middle of the two, which will allow us to have multiple boats entering and exiting the water concurrently. Next slide, please. The consolidated east dock includes seventy-six slips. We've got the numbered slips seven through eighty-two. So note that it does start at slip seven and not at slip one, which is why it ends at slip eighty-two. We do have one access point from the shoreline and then everything else is waterward with approximately sixty feet in between the docks for boat maneuvering. And each of those slips will also have a shore station to keep the boats out of the water when not in use. Next slide, please. The next two slides, eight and nine, are cross-section views of those docks showing the pilings, showing the finger piers, delineating the individual slips as required by the Eagle permitted application process. Same for the next slide. Which is the other dock. And then next slide, please. Next slide is the seawall, which is an existing seawall. Due to the age and condition of the seawall, we're gonna be replacing that seawall or have requested to replace that seawall with a modern, robust system to last us for years to come. Additionally, we're proposing to place the riprap along the rest of the shoreline, replacing what was previously permitted and then expanding upon that to continue to protect the upland area of the campground. Next slide. This slide is the wetland impact that we're proposing to the project. Currently, the existing boat launch has some small wetland on each side of it, fairly low quality. And we are proposing to impact four one thousandths of an acre in order to provide a consolidated boat launch at that location. And the next slide has the cross-sections for that wetland impact. You can see on the left there, sections K, L, and M. We're also providing the typical riprap detail cross-section on the upper right-hand corner. And then the typical stair detail, which we believe we have, I believe we have four to six stairs where campers can access the beach area and the water area by going over the stone protection system. Thirteen. Next slide, please. Finally, we are providing stormwater management basin overflows from pretreatment basins serving the campground area into into adjacent nearby wetlands and streams. These are not technically impacts to the wetlands or streams because they occur outside of them. And those basins are intended primarily for infiltration. However, if the basins are to become full in a storm greater than that, which is required by the Lelandoff County Drain Commission and approved by the Lelandoff County Drain Commission, we want Eagle to be aware of and understand that extra stormwater would be discharged into those wetlands and creeks in order to continue to preserve and provide the hydrology that those areas currently enjoy as well. That is a high-level summary and overlook of the proposed project. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Ryan. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jason, for sharing that information on the application. As mentioned before, part of this informational session is a question and answer session. So if you have a question on this application or project and would like to ask it, there's a couple of different ways you can do that. You can submit your questions using the Q and A box at the bottom of your screen. So you see that Q and A box. You type your question in and then submit it. Or if you prefer to ask it verbally, you can click the hands icon at the bottom of your screen and what that'll do is that'll raise your hand in Zoom. We'll call on you, unmute you, allow you to unmute yourself, and then you can ask your question. If you're on the phone, there are some phone and callers. You can type pound two on your receiver and what that will do is that will raise your hand in Zoom and then we can call on you using the last four digits of your phone number and unmute you the same way and you'll be able to ask your question. Again, this is the Q and A session. If you have a statement to make on the record on this project, that's gonna be a little bit later on during the hearing portion of tonight's activities. So with that, Joe and Robin, we're gonna go ahead and start this question and answer session. So if there are any out there questions you have for Joe or Robin or our panel, feel free to ask them. And I'll keep an eye on the Q and A box. And so what will happen? If if we don't have any questions that come in, what we'll do is we'll move on to the hearing portion, but we wanna give an opportunity to ask questions in case anyone in the audience has them. All right, so I do have one question. Our full size of the it says, I think it's exhibits available. Okay, if I think that's what exits available, I think it's exhibits. I'm assuming talking about the plans.
Yes, the plans and all the application information is available in my Enviro and I know that we'll have the link below. You can also email me and I can send you the link to receive it, to access it online.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Robin. And like Robin said, we're gonna provide both Robin's contact info as well as that link to my Enviro in a little bit here. So another question, what existing permits are in place for the Marina? I don't know if you know that, Robin, or
I don't know that off the top of my head. I would have to look back in our database to see. It's been a number of years since I've worked on anything at this campground, so I can't say for sure if there's anything, any valid permits remaining.
Gotcha. And would that also be in my Enviro potentially?
Yes.
Hey, are there any other questions that you have tonight before we move on? And again, I'll give a couple of minutes here. So after the question and answer session, we'll move on to where you can make a statement for the record on this. We'll also provide other ways you can make a comment tonight, like through my Enviro that Robin mentioned a little bit earlier. And then we're gonna provide Joe and Robin's contact information if you have any questions that come up. So I'm still not seeing any questions, so I think we will go ahead and move on to the hearing portion tonight. All right. And again, these are the other ways to submit an official comment in case you didn't wanna make a comment tonight. For the record on this application and project, there's other ways to do that. You have until the twentieth of this month, so the comment period is gonna be open for ten days, which is October twentieth. You could submit it by my Enviro under submission HPR And you see the link there in front of you. I will put that in the chat here in a little bit. And then also by mail, you can submit written comments to Eagle, E-G-L-E, Water Resources Division, Cadillac District Office, one-twenty West Chapin Street, and that's spelled C-H-A-P-I-N, and that's Cadillac, Michigan, All right, so at this time, Robin, I'd like you to invite or invite you to read the opening statement for tonight's hearing.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Robin Schmidt and I am the District Representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I will be serving as a hearings officer for this public hearing on Eagle submission number With me tonight is Joseph Haas, Supervisor of the Cadillac and Gaylord Districts. To describe how this is going to work tonight, I will begin with some background information about why we are here tonight. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide your comments and we will spend a majority of the time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will read a closing statement. By way of background information, the Water Resource Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream, or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing new docks and building in a designated critical dune area, wetland or floodplain. The law governing these responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety-four, Public Act four fifty-one as amended. We are here tonight because Northgate Lelandoff Pines LLC has proposed the following. To relocate and reconfigure the existing Marina dockage to create eighty-two slips, six hundred and eighty linear feet of broadside dockage, creating sixteen broadside slips, installing a two hundred and forty foot long by six foot wide main pier to the east dock comprised of a two hundred and eighty foot long by six foot wide A head pier with twenty thirty foot long by four foot wide finger piers and thirty-eight seasonal bolt hoists and a two hundred and eighty foot long by six foot wide B head pier with twenty thirty foot long by four foot wide finger piers and thirty-eight seasonal bolt hoists. The installation of the south dock and installing, sorry, the south dock comprised of a one hundred and eighty-one foot long by six foot wide main pier with a sixty foot long by six foot wide T head pier dock and two thirty foot long by four foot wide finger piers and six seasonal bolt hoists and slips. Proposed shoreline protection includes installation of two eight-foot-long new seawalls with riprap toestone. Install three hundred and, sorry, one hundred and thirty-seven feet of replacement seawall with riprap toestone. Repair two hundred and ninety-two feet of riprap and add twenty-eight cubic yards of new riprap. Install twelve cubic yards of riprap along eighty-four feet of shoreline. Install eighty cubic yards of riprap along five hundred and forty-one feet of shoreline and install thirty-nine cubic yards of riprap along six hundred and, sorry, two hundred and sixty-four feet of shoreline. Install five sets of seasonal stairs for lake access along the shoreline. Remove existing boat ramp by dredging and excavating approximately fifty-two cubic yards of material from an approximately fifty cubic yard from a fifty square foot area, then place approximately fifty-two cubic yards of sand and riprap to restore the bottom land and shoreline. Removal of removal and new boat ramp dredge approximately six, one hundred and sixty-nine cubic yards of material from approximately one hundred and sixty-nine square feet of wetland and approximately one thousand three hundred and sixty-four cubic yards of material from sixteen hundred square foot area of bottom lands of Lake Lelandoff. Then place approximately thirty-two cubic yards of fill and thirty-two square foot of wetland and one thousand three hundred and sixty-four cubic yards of fill material in sixteen hundred square feet of bottom land to create a fifty-foot-long by thirty-two-foot-wide boat ramp. Install a seventy-five-foot-long by four-foot-wide seasonal launch dock. For the dry hydrant, dredge approximately three hundred and forty cubic yards of material from a twenty-five-foot-long by fourteen-foot-wide by one-point-three-foot-deep area. Then place approximately three hundred and forty cubic yards of fill material to install a dry hydrant in Lake Lelandoff. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activity is described in the public notice meets certain criteria set by Part 301 inland lakes and streams of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety-four, Public Act four fifty-one as amended. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the stream and wetlands. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part 301 inland lakes and streams of Nareba, Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by Section three oh one oh six and Rule four of Part three oh one. One, the department shall issue a permit if it finds a structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or appearing rights. Two, the department shall not grant a permit if the project proposed, sorry, proposed project and structure will unlawfully impair or destroy any waters or other natural resources of the state. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part three oh three Wetlands Protection of Act four fifty-one, Eagle is charged with making the following indications as required by Section three oh three eleven of Part three oh three. A permit for an activity listed in Section three oh three oh four shall not be approved unless the department determines that the issuance of a permit is in the public interest, that the permit is necessary to realize the benefits of the drive, benefits derived from the activity and that the activity is otherwise lawful. One, a permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that an unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. Two, a permit shall not be issued unless the applicant has also show, also shows either of the following. The proposed activity is primarily dependent upon being located in the wetland or a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the Northgate Lelandoff Pines LLC an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make a note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decisions on whether or not there is widespread support or opposition to the project. In just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments. But before I do so, I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in the Lelandoff Enterprise September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three edition. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow, we will follow these steps. One, first, the applicant or the consultant has already had an opportunity to describe the proposed project. Second, we will then call on those who have indicated in their registration that they would like to speak. After that, we will call on those who have raised their hand in the Zoom toolbar that they would like to make a comment if they have not already been called upon. As a reminder, if you are participating in the hearing via telephone only, follow the directions of the moderator on how to identify that you would like to make a comment. You may also submit your comments to Eagle via my, via the my Enviro portal, via email or US Mail. When all the comments have been completed, we will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given five minutes to make their comments. We will indicate to you when you have a minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the time allotted. If need be, we will indicate when your time is ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to each other tonight. Please recognize that Eagle staff is here to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project and listen to those comments. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making this decision on whether or not to issue a permit for the project. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for ten days from the date of this hearing, ending on October twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the ten-day public comment period will also be considered an Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will will make a decision to either issue a permit for the project as proposed or with modifications or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle my Enviro portal website and searching for the application number HPR-five-nine-M-H dash dash C-X-six-Z-seven. Thank you for your attention. We will begin calling the names of those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement.
Yeah, thank you, Robin. Thanks for reading that. As Robin mentioned, we have a list of names who during registration indicated that they wanted to make a comment. So I'm gonna go through that list of four people. I'll identify your name. Then I'll unmute you. You can unmute yourself. Then you can begin making your comment when you're ready. Again, you'll have up to five minutes. I'll give you one-minute heads up when you're getting close, just so you know when you have a minute left. So everybody has the same amount of time. We're gonna keep it pretty close to the five-minute limit. Also, please, if you have an affiliation, identify that as well as your name. Once we get through this list of names, we're gonna go through people have the hand raised. And again, everyone will have an opportunity of those on the phone will be able to raise their hand to using pound two on their receiver, just like we talked about for the Q and A session. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna kick it off. James Weiser, James, I'm going to unmute you. And then you'll be able to unmute yourself. All right. All right, you're unmuted on our end, James. It sounds like you're muted on your end too. You can begin when you're ready.
Yeah, my name is Jim Weiser. I'm on the board of the Lake Lelandoff Lake Association, but my comments at this time are from me individually. I want to call attention to their plans for the shoreline. They want to fully replace the seawall and increase the part of the shoreline armored by riprap from two hundred and ninety-two feet to eleven hundred eighty-one feet. There are no plans for any native plantings on the shoreline, not even a six-foot no mode, no-mo zone as a buffer. Eagle's best management practices suggest reducing the length of a seawall by at least twenty-five percent, incorporating Woody structures along the shoreline, excuse me, and having a six-foot no-mo zone. And Northgate says that these were considered but were found to be, quote, highly problematic, end quote. A reduction in the length of the seawall was ruled out due to the magnitude A reduction in the length of the seawall was ruled out due to the magnitude of wave action in that area. In fact, a calculation of wave energy there shows low erosive potential. It is not exposed to the dominant southwest winds or from storm winds from the north or northwest. It's partially sheltered by existing aquatic vegetation, which is indicated on their drawings. Further, they say that a natural shoreline is ruled out by extreme wave energy. And impacts to campers in terms of lake access and visual impairments. They say that a no mo zone would not be conducive to campers wanting to enjoy the shoreline. But I would say that native plants would in no way block the view of the lake. And appropriate gaps could be left to allow lake access over their engineered stairways. Beyond erosion control, there are other benefits of a natural shoreline which should be considered. The buffer zone will slow and filter runoff. Their plans call for about six hundred feet of impervious surfaces. Roads, parking areas, rooftops, cool decks in close proximity to the water. Runoff has the potential to carry impurities directly into the lake. Plus, I'm worried about possible overflow from their stormwater ponds and sewage lagoons. Can these handle the type of rain event we had last month? Wouldn't it be best to have a further line of defense at the shoreline? Ideally, this native area should be about thirty five feet in width. If they object that this uses up areas planned for recreation, I would suggest that the other structures be moved back away from the water. Further reducing the risk of runoff reaching the lake. Please do not prove this plan as submitted. Thank you.
Now think of your comments, Jim. All right, next up is Donald Beatty, and after Donald is Bill Rastetter. So Don, I will unmute you on our end. All right, Donald, it looks like you are unmuted. You can begin when you're ready.
Hello, again, my name is Donald Beatty. I'm a resident of Centerville Township. I am also a board member of the Lake Lillenaw Lake Association. But right now I'm going to speak individually. I believe the Lake Association has submitted or will submit a formal position on the entire project. My concern, initial concern here relates to the location of the new docks. That area has aquatic plants growing. I believe just to the south of the docks and frankly, I think there are other. Non-emergent aquatic plants very, very close to that area where the docks are to be located. Aside from the fact that those aquatic plants will likely be disturbed in the construction process. It will also funnel boat activity through those very sensitive areas and habitats. And as a result, I think it could cause some substantial damage. To flora and fauna in, in the lake and surrounding area by increasing that boat traffic and concentrating it in. One particular area. Secondly, I question whether it's, there is adequate depth for the boats. Without having undue prop wash. Prop wash is a significant problem. And the water depths must be sufficient to avoid that, to avoid that occurring. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Donald. All right, so next up is Bill Rastetter. And then after Bill is Randy Carfanta. So Bill, I'm going to unmute you. And you can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready. It looks like you're unmuted on our end. Are you there, Bill?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, you can begin when you're ready.
My name's Bill Rastetter, R A S T E T T E R. It's good to see some of you have dealt with in other capacities, but I'm tonight appearing as a Centerville Township resident. And landowner. And I want to speak to the issues of the water quality of Rice Creek. We own property that is subject to a conservation easement or actually several pieces of property subject to conservation easements. That were purchased with funding through the DEQ Eagle. Under the Clean Michigan Initiative. Specifically for the purpose of preserving the water quality of Rice Creek. Because it was part of the overall initiative to protect the, it was, it was for, I think the term that you used was priority land protection parcels. Integral to maintaining high water quality in the Lake Lillenaw watershed. And there are at least seven property owners on tributaries of Rice Creek. Who have made these commitments to, to restrict construction or development activities on our lands to preserve the water quality. So that the Lake Lillenaw water quality will, will be maintained. Many of the issues in this application for this permit are. Connected to a pending application to the Centerville Township Planning Commission for site, a site development plan. And if at all possible, I would request that Eagle hold off. Any final determination until the Centerville Township Planning Commission is able to make a ruling on the pending site plan application. And the reason being. That there are aspects of the onshore development that are going to have an adverse impact on the water quality of Rice Creek. And if the planning commission were to consider requesting the developer to move away from the watershed of Rice Creek. And the, and like Lillenaw to move some of these activities away. Then it would help preserve the water quality. Right now. Activities related to these boat launches include. The traffic of the vehicles and parking that is going to cause runoff into the creek that is going to impair the water quality that we upstream property owners are protecting. As, as all of you know, you, you, Robin referenced the language of part three oh one and, and. The potential of adverse effect on stream and wetlands. And mentioned the notion of the feasible and prudent alternative and all of that, of course, comes from the Michigan Environmental Protection Act, part seventeen of Narepa. And one of the provisions of that act would. Require your department not to authorize activity that is likely to have the effect of impairing water quality or the other natural resources. And again, we have to put this application. In the same, you know, we have to consider at the same time as the land use application to the planning commission. Because. What would the, the, what the developer is asking for. Of you to allow all of these boats and to allow the activities. Hardening the shoreline. And to, to not take into account the feasible and prudent alternative from that. That, that result is going to have an adverse impact on the water quality. If at all possible, and I don't know if your regulations allow that, but if at all possible for you to hold off making a decision. The planning commission is holding the hearing on the twenty fifth of October. The planning commission meets the first Monday of November. Presumably there may be a decision by then. And if the developer is allowed to proceed with the site plan in front of you, then that's one thing. But what if the developer is required to modify that site plan? And that some of these activities that the developer is showing in the plans to you are not going to be allowed, then what happens? Do you have to start this process all over? You know, I, I don't know the answer to this. I'm, I'm, I'm talking tonight, not as a lawyer, but as a landowner.
You have one minute left, Bill.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm talking tonight as a landowner concerned about the water quality. We've made a substantial commitment to protect the water quality of Rice Creek and of Lake Lillenaw. And nothing should be allowed that's going to impair that. There are feasible and prudent alternatives. And it's not just the alternative of doing nothing, which of course is always valid. But there are ways that these activities that the developer wants to do. Could be done on other parts of the property in a way that preserves the natural environment. Thank you.
You're right at time. Thanks for your comment, Bill. All right, we have one more person to get to who is on our list and at, at this time. Yeah, welcome, Jim Ostrowski, who is my colleague with Environmental Support Division. Jim will be taking over from here as the moderator. Yeah, thanks for your time tonight. It's been a pleasure moderating up to this point. Next person up is Randy Carfanta, and then after Randy. We're going to go to the raised hands and Jim will explain again, I'm sure. How we're going to take comments by raised hands and for those on the phone. So Randy. You are unmuted on our end. You can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready. Are you, are you there, Randy? It looks like. You're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Randy? All right, what we'll do, Randy, is we're going to go to the next person. And then we'll come back to you. And hopefully get your audio, whatever audio issue might be having worked out. All right, so next up will be Chris. Chris, you were just there. Chris Grobel. I'm going to unmute you. Looks like you lowered your hand. Do you still want to make a comment, Chris? Please raise your hand. All right. All right, are you there, Chris? You're unmuted. You can begin when you're ready. Okay. Oh wait, is this Randy? Chris, you can unmute yourself, too. Whoever can unmute themselves. Randy, it looks like you were just unmuted. Just try to unmute yourself one more time. We could hear you for a second. There, there you go. Chris?
I did unmute myself as Chris.
Okay, Chris, we can hear you. You can begin your comment when you're ready.
All right, thank you very much. So, thank you, Christopher Grobel, Grobel Environmental and Planning Associates out of Lake Lillenaw. And I work as the planner of record for Centerville Township. So I have a couple of comments and really just kind of building from the part three oh three. Three oh one criteria. I think there needs to be some clarification about township role and state role, chicken and egg kind of stuff. So first of all, under part three oh three, it's absolutely required that a permit be issued. If it's otherwise authorized, otherwise lawful. And that means complying with, you know, township zoning. And I don't understand currently the plan as it relates to Eagle's permit application. And the state, well, I should say the court ordered agreement and settlement agreement that there be a limit of the eighty two boats period. At this site at any time and how those things are going to work together. So I don't expect any kind of. Tonight, but some kind of written verification and response to how that works. The eighty two boat limit and then the hundred and seventeen, how that all works together. I think that it's critically important. The, the state consider the hardening of that entire shoreline with riprap. Be thought of when there are alternatives like biotechnical solutions to shoreline erosion. But in particular, if there aren't that number of boats, then there's no need for any of this kind of shoreline work in the first place. So looking for some clarification from Eagle on the otherwise lawful characteristics on those two things. Secondly. The stormwater plan is critical to all the rest of this in terms of disposing of stormwater in a wetland, which is a three oh three use. Which is under the jurisdiction of the, of Eagle and. What kinds of, we're looking at a hundred year design, you know, sort of threshold. Or an engineering design threshold of something more. The county owner requires twenty five years and I'm not really sure what's being asked in terms of. The stormwater plans and would like some clarification on that. And then lastly, the township very clearly limits under their zoning. Twenty five percent lot coverage limit. And how does all that calculate into these discussions and decisions, decisions by Eagle for stormwater. Shoreline, wetland issues. Because the township needs to know what the lot coverage percentage is. That the state is considering because we have yet to hear from the applicant what that percentage is. So I'll leave it at that and thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Grobel. For your comment tonight. Again, I'm Jim Ostrowski. I work in Environmental Support Division here at Eagle. I'll be taking over the moderating activities. If you have a, want to make a comment tonight, you can click the raise hand icon and we will unmute your line and hopefully that'll work. We're going to go to next Nancy Papa. Nancy. You should be able to unmute your line on your end there. Nancy Papa, you should be able to click on mute. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Papa. I'm the president of the Lake Lillenaw Lake Association. And we represent about five hundred households in the area. And we are very concerned about this application regarding the modification of the shoreline. The replacement of the seawall and the reconfiguration of the marina and its impacts on Lake Lillenaw and Rice Creek. Number one, we're very concerned about replacing the seawall without any consideration of best management practices, which seems unbelievable in this day and age. This development has a very intensive use of the shoreline. And at a minimum, best management practices should be required in the replacement of the seawall. So we're, we're hoping to see that twenty five percent reduction in length. A thirty five foot vegetative buffer and stone that's placed on a one to three slope so that animals can come and go along the shoreline. We think the applicant's reasons for not using best management practices are weak. I think Jim Weiser already pointed out that the wave energy calculations. Have shown that the wave energy is low and. So anyways, we, they also. Say that their problems with viewing through a vegetative buffer are problematic, but we believe that could also be alleviated with shorter plans. So we don't think their, their case for not using best management practices is very strong. We think that there's excessive use of riprap in this application. An increase of almost four hundred percent. And again, they say it's due to the wave action. And we think it's due to the boat traffic from their own RV park. And so we think that if there's. Erosion being caused by the property itself, that in itself is not a good enough reason to harden the shoreline. And eliminate all the benefits that you get from a natural shoreline. And maybe the applicant should be considering boat traffic controls instead of riprap. Our second concern is related to the marina. We've been unable to find a permit for this marina and we wonder if it is, if it's lawful today. And if this is considered a new marina, the eighty two slips. Well, we have many concerns related to the carrying capacity of the lake. And the impacts on the bentic layer, which we're not really talking about here. So if indeed this is a lawful marina. We have concerns related to the introduction of invasive species. And as mentioned earlier, even though the permit is asking to reconfigure eighty two slips. The applicant is installing a double lane boat launch, which indicates many more boats than eighty two. And that's where the concern about invasive species comes in. We would like to see that a requirement of the permit. Require a manned high pressure. Boatwash station to help prevent invasive species. We think this proposed expansion is likely to result in significantly increased pressure on Lake Lillenaw. From these onshore activities that have been described. And we are deeply concerned. That the plan as proposed will materially damage the environment. And we suggest that this permit, if issued, requires nothing less than best management practices to limit the environmental impacts of this aggressive. to limit the environmental impacts of this aggressive lakeshore project. We don't believe that this application shows any regard for protecting the shoreline or the water quality and seems only concerned with the development of a high-intensity use on a lake in a very natural setting. So we respectfully ask for strict protective measures if this permit is issued. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Alright, we're gonna check back in. Just wanna remind you, if you do have a comment, you can click the raise hand icon and that'll indicate to us that you would like to make a comment tonight. I know the other hands raised at the moment. So uh I'll go back to Randy Carfanta. Um Randy, can you, I sent you a note. Maybe you could check your microphone to make sure that you got the right run selected. Uh if you could check that.
Hello?
Oh, there you are. Okay, yeah, we can hear you. You can, you can go ahead and make your comment when you're ready now.
Thank you. Here I am. And uh this will not be uh technical information. What is lacking from the uh, from the presentations is the concerns about habitat and environment and environment. Uh in terms of habitat, the elimination of uh wetlands will both increase the uh pollution of the lake as well as provide a uh a destruction of of animal life and habitat. The, I um am an owner, a property owner in the Rice Creek watershed. And as well, I row at the bottom south end of Lake Leland probably at least two hundred times a year. So I'm pretty familiar with this site from the water. And the destruction of wetlands or the vegetation in the uh boat dock areas would have a dramatic effect. The boat traffic increase would not merely come from the uh, from the camp property itself. It would come from all the access to the lake. And the inevitable um effect would be a dramatic increase of invasive quagga mussels. And what quagga mussels do is they filter feed on phytoplankton. And phytoplankton provides up to eighty-five percent of the oxygen in the world. So to eliminate, to have the quagga mussels and the invasive species and the elimination of quagga muss of phytoplankton, which will make the water nice and clear. But the fact of the matter is no oxygen, no fish, and ultimately no oxygen, no lake. Um the request I have, and I think I put it in the chat box uh in terms of this presentation, is that I think a site and visit, site visit with all invited would be a critical um point for the decision in this, in this matter. The walk down the uh, the shoreline to see exactly where everything would be sitting and how it would look. I think would um would be extremely important. The hardening of the shoreline is obviously something about um the generation of funds and not any concern for the environment or habitat. The destructive runoff from all the increase in traffic, not merely the eighty campgrounds, but from all the traffic would uh would create runoff uh south of the uh south of the proposed site and south of Rice Creek. Uh these are hilly roads with big curves and ultimately would, the runoff would affect Lake Leland and it would also affect Solon Swamp. Uh which is, is Solon Swamp, which is a jewel of Lake, of uh Leland County. The health of all this is really fragile. And what we're describing is a uh full-force uh destruction of it. Uh and I would ask that you seriously consider the effect on the water quality that this is going to have and deny the request for permit. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Glad we got you on. Uh is there anyone else who has not yet made a comment who would like to make a comment tonight at our hearing? Okay, I do see uh Chris Grobel, you got your hand up. I know you already made a comment. Do you have someone else there that with you that would like to make a comment?
Well, just a question about timeframes. If you guys could cover the timeframe for your consideration of these comments. The uh deadline for a determination on the permit um would be very helpful before we all leave.
Okay, well, I'll uh give that to Joe and Robin. Uh Joe or Robin, you wanna comment on that when we're done? That'd be great. Thank you, Chris. Okay, just checking to see if anyone else got a comment. I'll give it another minute here. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so I'm going to turn it over to Robin who will uh read our closing statements for tonight.
Thank you for your comments and your cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until October twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Following the close of the public, public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just to remind those that may still want to provide a comment, comments may, can be provided via the My Enviro Portal, via email or US mail. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Robin. And um Joe, I'm gonna turn it over to you. See if you wanna make any remarks. I think Robin did cover that question that Chris had about the comments.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, just do.
Sorry, Robin. Um go ahead.
Yeah, I did wanna say that the deadline that we have now for a decision is uh November thirtieth. Thank you.
I would just, thanks, Robin. Um I would just say thanks uh to everyone for taking the time to be actively involved in this hearing. Uh public involvement is a priority for Eagle and your participation is important to us. Particularly when it comes to protecting natural resources for uh present and future generations. Your, your comments are important part of making sure our review of this project is thoroughly and appropriately reviewed. So thanks again for your comments and cooperation. We do appreciate that you uh you have shown the interest um in this application for a permit by taking the time to be here. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Uh yeah, just wanna remind everybody that on the screen I do have the contact information for Robin and Joe. Uh for a couple of you that are on the phone, uh Robin's phone number, if you need to get ahold of her, is two, three, one, three, eight, three, five, nine, five, two. Again, it's two, three, one, three, eight, three, five, nine, five, two. And uh yeah, thank you all for joining us tonight. Uh there will be a copy, a recording of this public meeting posted on our YouTube channel uh the next couple of days. So you should see one up there by Friday, hopefully, if not sooner. You go to Eagle YouTube and you should be able to find it there in case you missed it or missed part of this or wanna share with somebody else. I wanna thank everyone for joining us tonight and have a great rest of your evening. Thank you.